Next up is information. Dr. Swift, would you please start us off with the superintendent update?
Yes. Thank you Chair Kelly and trustees, members of the community. It's good to be with you to update this evening on November. Here we are on November 17th. I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Shante Langford, who's here with us this evening and Ms. Holly Scher, her assistant and members of her team for a successful job fair today. They had 40 or so appointments across different job categories. And I was excited to see some of the hourly positions with candidates today. So I'm excited and can't wait to hear how that's going to come out. Ms. Langford, and thank you. Trustees, you have at your places and we'll collect them again at the end of the evening. But I want to give a big thank you to MDHHS, to Ms. Jenna Blackbacher and Ms. Liz Margolis, who headed up the team yesterday for our very first AAPS vaccine clinic for students five to 11 years and their families. So everybody in the family could get vaccination at this event. We gave, I think it was around 260, somewhere. What was the number? Oh, about 180, thank you. At the end of the day, about 180 vaccinations. And I was really inspired by the reasons that children gave for getting their vaccines. Here is Mia, who's 10 years old. And she said, because it will be a safer, it will be safer for my friends and family. We also have with us the superhero photo board that Ms. Osensky prepared for the students and lots of great photos out on social media and around with children, very excited for their vaccines. Now tomorrow evening, again, we'll be at Huron High School, correct? For the second in our series of vaccine clinics. We have sent that information out to parents so that they have it and are ready with that. Trustees, I think the next part of our update is just to brief you and update you on a situation that you, in your position, receive updates from me multiple times every day on, pretty much. But I wanted to call to the attention publicly of the trustees and of our community that we are very concerned right now about the health and safety, the health and safety of our students and staff will continue as our top priority in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. We are currently experiencing an alarming increase in staff and student COVID-19 cases, as well as the related staffing challenges that come along with an increase in cases. While these are two distinct areas of concern, on many days, as you know, and as our commenters spoke to this evening, they really turn out to be one issue because they're so deeply connected. As a COVID mitigation step to interrupt transmission and to allow sick individuals to recuperate, we will be amending the Ann Arbor Public Schools' schedule for next week and providing Monday and Tuesday, November 22nd and 23rd, as an extension to the traditional Thanksgiving school break. I know this is not a message that many folks want to hear, and I do understand that. We take school closures very seriously. I understand that the week before notice will pose challenges for some of our families, and I sincerely apologize for that situation. We have worked over previous days, trustees, as you know, to pursue every option to safely open our schools on these days. And over the course of the previous two days, our cases have really spiked even further. So we've been faced with this decision today. Over the past three weeks, our students and staff cases have grown steadily. Unfortunately, since Friday, we've seen a spike in those cases, especially among adults in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, both staff and partner contractors. In recent weeks, these cases are distributed, just like it's been over recent weeks. They are distributed widely across many buildings in the school district. So I want to be clear, trustees, this is not today, an individual outbreak at one school. It is a more pervasive set of cases across many, many schools. The increase in cases in the Ann Arbor Public Schools impacts every area of district operations, classrooms in schools, transportation, food service, custodial, and all the supports that go along with. This situation is a direct reflection of the COVID case surge in our Ann Arbor and Washtenaw County community and across Michigan. Just a few numbers, trustees. We do make these decisions based on our numbers. So far this week, and we're on Wednesday evening, 21 adults confirmed positive. On the weeks prior, it would maybe have been a third of that. So that just gives you a little perspective. We have about 30 students this evening, so we're well over 50 cases right now on Wednesday. So that shows you really the spike that we're experiencing. I want to share how much we appreciate the parent, student, and staff support for the super six mitigation strategies. Trustees, every photo I see, every school I walk through, our students and staff are doing an extraordinary job keeping the mitigation strategies. And I know that that is helping. We're encouraged now that many elementary students are getting vaccinated. And yet, continued increases in COVID cases across our schools and high levels of community transmission in Ann Arbor directly impact our students and staff and the effort to fully staff our schools each day. We know vaccination remains our most effective tool in overcoming the COVID-19 virus. And with the MDHHS, we'll continue to host student and family vaccination events. And as we shared, the next one at Huron High School is scheduled for tomorrow evening. I also want to strongly urge staff and everyone in our community who is eligible to go ahead and get their booster vaccinations as soon as possible. We are recognizing, because we are seeing cases, trustees, as you are aware, among those who are fully vaccinated. So we know that the booster is important. Unfortunately, the staffing challenges, as we said, are directly connected to our COVID challenges. We already know that we will continue to experience staffing challenges this fall. We've increased our daily and long-term substitute pay rates twice this fall semester to incentivize a struggling and shallow labor pool. We know that during Thanksgiving week, we normally experience lower substitute availability. Accessing substitute teachers to fill in gaps in school staffing is a challenge beyond the other non-holiday weeks of this fall. I do want to give just a heads up to our parents, our staff, and our community. We have some immediate staffing challenges impacting us right now this week. And so folks should be aware that during Thursday and Friday, tomorrow and Friday, there could be intermittent service gaps with transportation, as well as with food and nutrition. Our Durham Transportation Team managers continue to jump in and drive the buses in the morning. Many of our drivers are doubling up to assist with additional routes after they finish their morning routes. Our Chartwell's Food and Nutrition Team has arranged for staff from other locations beyond our contract in Ann Arbor Public Schools to come in and support through the remainder of this week. Members of our Ann Arbor Public Schools team, we are briefed every evening and every morning. We monitor literally by the hour and deploy staff into those buildings where we can keep the school open by providing a few extra staff. On some days, though, that's not enough. And so that is the situation we're faced with at this time. The good news is we've successfully completed 12 weeks. That's one-third of our 21-22 school year. We began on August 30th, and this is the wrap-up of our first trimester. Closing the district for these two days will place the Ann Arbor Public Schools at three district closure days out of the 58 days of school this fall. Michigan school districts are allowed six days of school closures. So trustees, we will continue to monitor this situation very closely. And if needed, we will take appropriate steps as necessary to achieve the statutorily required full school year for our students and staff during this 21-22 school year. We are encouraged that with the recent availability of vaccines for students five to 11 years of age, and with the high rates of vaccination that we're already seeing in our 12- to 18-year-old students, combined with our highly vaccinated Ann Arbor Public Schools staff, that we will turn the corner and move past this challenging fall and winter. And yet, at this time, we also remain concerned with the current COVID surge and the health and safety of our students and staff in school right now. I want to give a thank you to our students and teachers, our school teams, our parents, and our community. Everyone I see is working incredibly hard together and making sacrifices to help keep our schools open this fall. We are stronger when we work together, and together we are making progress. So I just thank you for your partnership and for your support. Trustees, I'll be happy to take questions. Chair Kelly, I do see that Dr. Howell has arrived. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. It certainly is sobering this reality. Trustees, I'm sure you have questions or comments? Yeah, Trustee Cara Harrow.
I just have a comment more, a comment and a question that could be a follow-up. One thing I do want to say is that I do appreciate what you said in your update about it being very difficult for our community to hear this at what is seemingly such a late date, close to the days. But what we do know with our updates that we get periodically throughout that this is a days that we have been looking at for a long time, considering our numbers and what we saw earlier in the semester. And I think one of the reasons why it came so late is because of your effort and your desire to keep those two days open, knowing that that would be a challenge for many of our families in the community. So while to many it might seem like we are calling those days so late or so near to them, in reality, we've been thinking and looking about these days, I know, through your reports. And I appreciate you waiting for as long as you could and to look at the numbers for this particular week with the hope that we could open safely the next two days next week. And I hear from your report and from those very high numbers that you just reported to us relative to our previous weeks. I appreciate the decision to keep us safe, and it's something that I 100% support. So thank you so much for really trying to keep these days open for us, but just really not having much of a choice at this point. Thank you for the report. One thing I will say as a follow-up, or maybe it's a question or a comment, is I'm just curious about our ability to be able to sustain in the way that we've been doing and the stress and the pressure that it puts not only on our teachers to double up and our bus drivers to double up, but also our administration as well, to be able to mobilize so regularly what probably feels like a regular thing now, but in fact draws them away from their actual responsibilities that are outlined to them. So I understand the stress on the system. And I'm curious to hear what other trustees and what you might have to say about solutions for the future so that we can do what's manageable.
Thank you.
Trustees, Trustee Lazarus.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say I totally appreciate Trustee Cara Harrow's comments about how you've worked so hard and your team has worked so hard to really look at these numbers and try to figure a way to keep these days open. I know that there's high school, the one high school that's on a trimester, is unfortunately falling right on their finals, and that's going to be a little juggling game for them. But we do have to, our number one goal has always been to keep our staff and our students safe. So in light of the rising cases, but also in light that our young five through elevens are currently being vaccinated, which is a positive move, we still have to deal with that many of these cases that we're dealing with, with adults and with some students, are breakthrough cases. And so the current question, Trustee Baskett and Trustee Dupree and I were, had the fortunate time to be with fellow board members across the state of Michigan, over 500-plus districts, from very tiny districts to very large districts and all the medium-sized districts in between at the MASB Annual Leadership Conference over in Grand Rapids this last week. And we all seem to have similar problems and similar challenges with staffing. It seems that staffing hits, challenges hits, districts that are in the more metropolitan areas versus in the rural areas. But the rural area districts do have their challenges, too. They have, some of the districts have actually come up with some interesting solutions. Some of them, I don't think we would prefer. But the question comes, how important is it to keep our doors open? And so it's a quantity of days in school versus quality of education. And some of these, Trustee Baskett probably can chime in here on some of these possible options. And I think we might need to have a conversation about what can we start? Maybe we need to adjust our plan here and try to figure out a more sustainable that shows more, that displays more consistency for our community. I don't know the answer, and I think, I don't think any of our trustees have the answer. But I think we need to have that discussion and see if there's something that you can take from that discussion and then maybe come back with a recommendation. So Trustee Baskett, I would like to throw the ball over to you. And because we did have some conversations with some trustees over in Southfield that had an interesting plan. And I know our neighboring district just down the road has implemented a plan. And we've, and there's been others that have implemented an organization out of Chicago.
I'm very curious. I'm really grateful you all were at MASV to have these conversations. So I think now would be an appropriate time to share what those districts are seeing as appropriate solutions in their area as part of this conversation about sustainability here. So please, Trustee Baskett, if you don't mind.
Thank you. I was not fully prepared, otherwise I would have brought some props. Although I may have in my bag, they're not organized enough for me to make a show of it, if you will. Trustee Lazarus is correct. We had a great opportunity to network with other districts and in some cases commiserate over the state of affairs amongst all of us. It was interesting to hear of the options that some districts are looking at because we're all pretty much in the same boat. Everybody's short-staffed, whether it be a bus driver, a lunchroom supervisor, or a teacher. You know, we're all short-staffed and in need. So one of the options that we learned was, for example, Southfield, early November, they adopted a schedule of four days in the building and one day remote. Other districts were looking at half-days, you know, switching, especially for the larger buildings, to minimize the number of students in the building at one time. They split the buildings and, you know, one went one half of the day and the other went another half of the day. Another option that was offered, which was interesting, was the use of teachers. And again, let me pause and say, I know, Dr. Swift, your team has probably looked at all of these options, and we are where we are. It was just interesting to learn from a board perspective because I said, you know, how did your parents react to that? You know, what was the feeling in your community? And I would say regardless of the options, they did this because the community was looking for consistency. Everybody was looking for consistency, not only the teachers, but the staff, and of course, their superintendent, as well as the board. Like us, a lot of board members have students in the schools, if not grandparents, grandchildren, and other loved ones. So they were, they did this because of consistency and their mental health, if you will, of being able to offer education as consistently as the best quality that they can. Let me mention, before I forget, another option of using teachers remotely with the students in the building and an adult, of course, in charge to manage classroom, you know, issues, if you will. You know, and we were very, I was very candid with, you know, the board members who are using this option, as well as the vendors that were offering this option, was again, how did your community feel? And more specifically, how did your current teachers feel? Because I can see where that would be a potential, viewed as a potential threat. And some may have seen it that way, but also it was a potential way of sharing some of the burden, if you will, of trying to manage consistency for the students, keep the students on track for learning, as well as again, bring in some relief regarding additional support of teachers. And these teachers were considered like long-term subs. And we can talk about all the logistics with the union leadership if that's appropriate at another time. Trying to think, trustees, do you know, what was the other, were there other options that you guys had discovered? Trustee Dupree. So again, not, none of these options replace what we used to have. But this is not the past. This is a whole new world, if you will. And I appreciate the fact we were trying to offer pre-COVID services, so to speak. And we did make that commitment of doing a five-day-a-week in-building, but we're not doing it well. Not to say we're not trying, but as we said, we've always got buses late. We have, always have people who are ill or absent because they're taking care of other people. And we may, again, I would say, let's rethink what we're trying to do now because it doesn't seem to be working best for all of our students. So I'll stop there. And again, if you other trustees have any other thoughts on the options, please join in.
Can't hear you, trustee.
I was actually surrounded by folks who are more like staying in school full-time, and we don't have to wear masks, so.
Say again?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I said unfortunately, I was surrounded by people who were like staying in school full-time, and also, we don't have to wear masks. So that was the unfortunate reality for me in a couple of my classes, so.
Trustee Cara Harrow.
As I listen to those solutions, a lot of those solutions, I do think would work a lot of different places. But as I just hear them out loud, I know that some of them will not work here. And for me, for me, the solution that works here is the one that unfortunately can produce more people. So that we can't do. So I don't see any real solutions outside of any real viable solutions or one that are worth exploratory, exploring and committing even more of our resources if it's not outside of making one of those days virtual. I just don't see how even a half-day, it would still face the same problems of managing those buildings, deploying people into spaces where they aren't normally, and we would still have stacked buses, and we would still have. And I will think, I will say one more thing that I thought of as a result of one of our previous meetings is that when the snow comes, it won't be so easy to plow those roads because we don't have the driver, or the city may not have the drivers to do that, which was a concern that came up the last time, too. So transportation is going to become even more an issue as the weather starts to bear down on us. So to me, the only real viable solution to explore and to commit resource for exploration would to be make one of those days virtual. And I don't sit where the superintendent sits, but I'm sure this is something that has been pitched. We actually did it. We did it in the middle of the week. We were somewhat successful at it. Does it have to be in the middle week? I'm not sure. I think that's something that we would have to hear from the superintendent. So in many ways, based on those numbers, the staffing issues, really the lack of labor to be able to do the work. I just don't see what other sort of exploratory idea or creativity we could have with those limitations.
And I appreciate that, Trustee Cara Harrow. I mean, who's to say it's one day a week? You know, I mean, so you're right.
Not me.
Right. Let's talk about what, yeah, you know, what would be, you know, what would work? Of course, we always have the opportunity to hear from our community, as we know. So we expect that, we welcome that, as well as any other options that people would like to suggest. But I think, looking around the table, there is an understanding that we should explore what we're trying to do now.
I think so.
Trustee Dupree.
Just a quick question. If we were to explore different options, how would we get feedback from the community to see what would best work for our parents?
I don't think we have a problem getting feedback from the community, to be very honest with you.
Trustee Lazarus.
One of the things that I think that's very interesting, and I think this would help our community understand, the state allows us six days, Dr. Swift, you referenced that in your, and they call in your update, but they call them act of God days. When those are called, there's no teaching, there's no asynchronous, there's no synchronous going on on those days. If we were to go beyond those days, then we have to, unless the state forgives us, which they did, didn't they do that the year before? That everybody was going way beyond the acceptable days, and then they forgave them. But the other thing is if we were to go synchronous, like how we did in last year, where there's a live teacher on the screen and the kids are interacting with the teacher at home, that would be considered a count day, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But if they're home and there's no teacher, and they're just on the computer catching up on their homework and doing whatever the teacher has put in their Schoology lesson, that is not a count day.
Well, there's another level, which is two-way communication during the day. That's not a method that we've used very much. Because, again, back to your comments, trustees, we've really tried to go for the quality engagement and interaction.
Sure, because that's what we strive for.
That's what we strive.
But I just wanted to make that comment so our community is clear in understanding how the state requires us to fulfill a count day versus a non-count day or an act of God day. And that if we go beyond and they do not forgive us for those extra days, we have to make those up on the back end. So instead of getting out on June 12th or whatever, we get out on June 17th or whatever, however it falls on the weekend. So those are things that we keep in mind when we don't, you don't call these days like Monday, Tuesday lightly.
No, not at all.
Because we haven't even had a flake of snow. Well, we did the other day. But we have to take that into consideration. And as Trustee Cara Harrow mentioned, the city has also notified us that they're having staffing problems.
Yes.
And snowplow drivers and salting the roads is going to be a challenge for them, and not only for the city, but for the eight surrounding county townships that we pull our students from. So it's a puzzle.
Can I also add, though, clarification? It's not even, well, we have an expectation of the number of students who are participating and the number of teachers, full-time certified, fully-employed teachers as well. So there are a lot of factors. It's not just even having the day, but who's there, how many are there? And so we have to be very mindful of all of the requirements.
Yes, the attendance audit requires meeting a threshold. Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you. Trustee Gaynor.
I don't have anything new or very clever to say. But again, I appreciate having this preliminary discussion because the crisis is real. You know, a year ago, some people would have liked us You know, a year ago, some people would have liked us to have gone back in school when, in November, when cases were at their peak and, you know, going higher. Right now, Michigan has the highest rate in the country. I don't know why. New COVID strain, I don't know. But every county, including Washtenaw County, cases are up. Hospitals are at their maximum again. And we're going, you know, we're going into these winter months, so the prospect isn't good. I don't know, you know, we could foresee some labor problems, but they're much more severe than we expected. We have raised rates. I'm glad we have. I saw one district raised hourly rates for one, I think it was pair educators, I'm not sure, but from like $13 to $18, but it's clearly more than just pay. And yes, people could say it's important to be in school. We have to have childcare. Yes, we have to have childcare, but if we haven't been able to find the staffing for it, it's not, it's not like we're saying, oh, we don't really need childcare. We want, we've been working hard, as trustee Kara Harrell said, to keep schools open, and it hasn't been possible. And the short-term prospects aren't great. So yes, let's have this awareness. You know, some, I mentioned to Dr. Swift, a parent reached out to me to say she heard a rumor that we were going to be closed between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I said, that's absurd. You know, we're doing everything we can to keep things open, but we can't just want it to be so and have it so. And, you know, we encourage input from the community. The public commentary today, most of it was wishes and horses. It's not fair for unvaccinated children to be quarantined. It's not a matter of fear. We want to keep them safe and we want to keep the people around them safe. And that, as we've said all along, that's a priority. So again, yeah, let's put our heads together and be aware of options if it comes to that. Hopefully, we can stay open. Again, I know we've said this, our staff have gone above and beyond. This is a national issue. Everybody's worn out for all sorts of issues and that's a real thing, too. It's not like teachers have gotten soft. You know, they're putting everything into it. So these are pandemic conditions still with breakthrough infections. Yeah, be careful out there.
Thank you, trustee. I echo your sentiment. Dr. Swift, my goal in having this become a conversation here was twofold. One, for the trustees who attended M A S B to share out what they were learning from our colleagues around the state. And also as an opportunity for you to hear trustees where they were, the type of direction that they're hoping we'll be able to move into. Do you have what you need from this conversation or are there additional issues we should address?
Thank you, Chair Kelly. I, I really appreciate the remarks of the trustees this evening. I appreciate your support and your partnership. I know that it is hard when our choices are not the ones we want them to be. And I recognize that that causes distress, as trustee Gaynor said, for everyone. I do want to share that the goal with this Monday, Tuesday, and I had a great conversation today, as I often do, with the executive director of Washtenaw County Health Department. And I asked her, is that, you know, our best hope, we were recently with a group of researchers from the University of Michigan, and we were talking about how the hope is that the vaccinations will help us get ahead of the winter seasonal uptick of the virus. And so I asked her, is there hope that if we use these days, get our boosters, get the young kids vaccinated, is there hope that we could pull out of this? And she is very knowledgeable and, and the team is. And trustee Gaynor, you alluded to this, no one knows that answer. And it'll be a few weeks before we know that answer. But trustees, and I want the community to know, our goal with these two days is to interrupt the chain of transmission that is clearly occurring right now in our schools, number one. Number two, to give people a chance, give sick folk a chance to recuperate. And then, number three, to allow some time to really focus in a priority of vaccination and boosters. Because if there is a hope to pull out ahead of this, it is getting that rate up. Ms. Lovelock did share that as of two days ago, Washtenaw County is a little above 25% on the five-to-11-year-olds. That was before our 180 yesterday, so we know we're moving up. She says that, you know, it's very impressive how quickly the numbers are moving up. I know the trustees and I've discussed our concern that there might be a plateau there somewhere. We hope not, but there probably is. So, and just what you all mentioned, some of these cases are breakthrough, in fact, quite a lot of them are. So, so there's that concern also. I think I have the general, the general ideas that were shared and we'll continue our conversation. And first of all, hope that perhaps this will do the trick and then we can get that Thanksgiving to winter break timeline going. I'll keep you posted throughout this time of course.
Chair Kelly. Yes. Trustee Lazarus.
A couple of our public commentary, and I just want to put this out there because this obviously could be a part of your decision-making and your recommendation, is the comments that refer to test to stay. We've had conversations about this. We've met with, and I know you, and Ms. Bacalor and Ms. Margolis meet on a regular basis with our county health and our Wash, W I S D members. And we, you have looked at that. And I've just done some simple numbers in my head, just very quickly, knowing how many students we have, how many staff we have. That's approximately 22,000 tests a week that we would have to do in order to do a weekly test to stay. And my understanding, and I keep hearing, that there's ample tests out there available for us to access. I just want to be clear, and I would like you to be clear. One, it takes about 15 minutes, and you've said this before in meetings before, takes approximately 15 minutes to do one test, times 22,000 students and staff on a weekly basis, divide that by seven hours or eight hours per person without a lunch, and, you know, we're talking over 5,000-plus hours just a week to do this, which comes out to approximately another 100 and maybe 40 people to administer this test to stay. One, are there ample tests out there to support a program such as this from the county? And two, obviously, we don't have access to 130-plus people to do testing on a, on an ongoing, full-time basis when we are struggling with meeting school, you know, doing what our core competency is, which is delivering quality school education. So I just want to, just want you to make a comment about how, you know, I appreciate our community trying to do this, and I know that there's some larger districts out there that have been supported privately to do a test to stay program, but we do not have that luxury. And if you could make a comment about that and maybe clarify some of that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Lazarus. I do want to clarify that the numbers you described are accurate for a whole system screening, testing, surveillance testing. The test to stay in particular is for those students who've been identified as close contacts. So that is a smaller subset. One of the commenters spoke to, once our younger children are vaccinated, the numbers of close contacts where there would be a question will come, will come down. And so we have said that test to stay is a consideration. We do need to get those number of cases down so that just what you shared, the math becomes more doable because at this time, it, we do not have the spare personnel to do that. Now, our folks, though, Ms. Bacalor is here this evening and the nurse team and the health specialist team, we recently received one of the HRAs that the state provided, and we're pleased to have that individual on our team now. They are doing a lot of testing. They'll, they were out at a middle school and an elementary school doing testing last week in areas where there might have been a case pop-up or cases and they want to see how the school is doing. They'll actually be out at an elementary school tomorrow, trustees, that I shared with you today, where we do have some concerns. So there is a lot of testing going on in the district, but that idea of prior to all children having access to vaccine, that number is a higher number. I will also share that at high school, from 12 years of age and above, we are not quarantining a lot of students because we are very fortunate to have high vaccine rates in Ann Arbor. And that's a benefit that many communities don't share. So I do see out in media and around the state, a lot of, for a lot of areas, test to stay is a very big deal because vax rates are very, very low. So, so we have been fortunate that our high school students and, and middle school students above 12, we really do have strong vax rates.
So, so is this a semantics issue? Because I'm hearing test to stay, I'm hearing surveillance testing, I'm hearing rapid response testing. Are they all similar or they're all different? Because I, I just want to be clear.
So this, thank you. The surveillance or screening testing would be saying we're going to test a certain percentage or everyone in the system. The test to stay is only for those students or individuals who were identified as close contacts of a positive, confirmed positive. And then the rapid test, we are getting those rapid tests that we request from the state. We very much appreciate getting those. But you're correct, we would not be able to access the number for testing everyone in the system. That, that isn't what that program is designed for.
So is rapid response testing the same as test to stay?
No, the, the, our response testing would be if we have a few cases in a building, the team would go and drop in.
Right.
And test in response. Whereas the test to stay is really if a child or an adult, an individual has been identified as a close contact.
Okay.
And I do want to turn, Ms. Bacalor, I'm, I'm the layperson. So is there anything I've said that, that you need to clean up?
I'm getting a little signal from across the room. Is this microphone working okay? Are we good? Okay. Yeah, I think, I think that was fine, but I can give a couple more nuances about it. Sometimes, this has been happening a lot, we get a couple of cases in a classroom or in a grade, and there, there are several students maybe who need to quarantine. I'm thinking mostly at an elementary level. And we are able to deploy our team to go very quickly, like overnight, and test the students who are not close contacts. And we also welcome students who are in quarantine to come and test as well. So, and that is a little bit of a change that I'm not sure if I've, I've mentioned to you, Dr. Swift.
You actually did, and I'm glad to mention it, but that is an exciting part.
Yeah. And, and sometimes, especially recently, we have received the notification of a case so late that the class is already in day four or five or six of the quarantine period. And we will, in effect, do test to stay for, for that class. We will just test them all a couple times and during that week, and they stay in school because we're so close to the end. We have found positive cases that way. So students who have been in school, who have tested positive during that time. The other thing I just want to mention is that every time we do one of these kind of rapid response screening of this discrete population, that takes our team away from their case investigation and contact tracing, which is so time-consuming. It's not like we have like a whole other group of people who are doing this work. So we do have an H R A. You know, she's a wonderful person. She's not an RN. She is not able to physically do the tests yet. So she's kind of in training with us. She's able to do other aspects of it. And I did also want to mention, sometimes it is thrown around how I said back in August that we would do test to stay. Well, I was very excited about the concept back in August. And my understanding at that time was that we would be getting additional human resources from M D H A tests to be able to do test to stay. So we now have one H R A who started last week. She's not actually able to do the testing. She's perfectly lovely. She's doing other aspects. She's being very helpful. So there was a little bit of a, you know, I'm disappointed because it, but we would need a huge other group of people. And I am sorry, we can't use volunteers for this. We can't. This is confidential information. We can't do that. So I hope that clarifies things a little bit. Happy to answer any other questions.
Yes, that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swift and Ms. Bacalor. This has been very helpful information for us, too. So it sounds like this was a fruitful conversation. With respect to Monday and Tuesday, that would be November 22nd to November 23rd, what can families expect in terms of the children that day? Will it be off the way a snow day would be off at this point? Okay.
Yes.
And how will families learn about that if they're not tuned into tonight's meeting?
So, thank you for clarifying. This is an extension of the Thanksgiving break for students and for staff. Mr. Clulley has sent the message to every family, and that is going by school messenger. We will use our school principals. We'll be communicating that so that our families do understand what to expect.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And I know your team's on top of it. I just wanted folks to know what to expect.